This time I'd like to call the meeting order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. There is a guest list to be signed. If everyone has signed that, that would be great. If not, would you please go ahead and sign up? And I'm asking now for approval of the minutes from the January ninth school board meeting. All those in favor?
I moved to approve the regular board meeting minutes from January ninth, 2023.
I second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the January ninth regular board meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same time. Prioritize the gentleman, Mr. Brill.
Good evening. We have with us are some of our active student representatives along with Mr. Roman tonight. So, wondering if Ms. Walisa should go first so that the students can go and then that they choose to want to, they want to get out of here before maybe it might snow, they can do that.
Perfect.
All right.
That'll be awesome. Thank you.
Sorry, a little bit of a surprise.
That's all right. Surprises are great. We're flexible over here. So I, you know, talk a little bit about some clubs and activities and things that are going on. Oh, sorry, Tony. Sorry. So we're gonna talk a little bit about clubs and activities and things going on that are pretty great on campus. I could sit here and talk a lot about this added club that they have created, but I think it's better to kind of hand the floor over to Mr. Roman and his students who will introduce what they're going to go over.
So, I am Mr. Roman. I do teach freshman unit. I have had the, the joy of being with these freshmen since seventh grade. I have them in seventh grade, have them in eighth grade, have them ninth grade. And we were given a T-shirt press and we thought, why don't we try to run a business out of this? And now that it's kind of gained traction, we're learning as we're doing, still make our mistakes. But they're gonna present what our business really, really is, how it works, what we do, why and how we do it. Make sure you're close enough in so the camera can see you guys.
I put the little tables for us. We can stay kind of near the table. That way people that are on Zoom can pay attention and hear you.
All right. Well, good evening. My name is Brianna. This is Mandy, Sunday and me. And we are all representatives of Cascade Customs. It is a T-shirt company that we have tried to make and well, without further ado, let's get started.
Brianna, can you, can you stand on the other side?
Yes.
That would be better. That way the board can see.
Okay. So our reason for starting this whole business is because we want to gain job experience and some of the job skills that we'll gain from this is like collaborating and planning our project. And looking at designing and creating our T-shirts. On that note, we'll show you how we make our T-shirts. First, you're going to take this shirt and then place it nicely centered in.
Under these guys. Somebody else is, they're stuck.
Then you're going to press the heat, press down and wait five seconds. Look at the heat press and then take our design and put it nicely centered on the shirt. Once done, you close the heat press again and wait five seconds. Once finished, you're going to do what is called a hot peel and peel paper off of the design. And then take off the shirt, make heat press and or have your shirt go on. So we use a projector to jot our projects out. And it is hopefully, sorry, this helps us with our customer service and it makes it easy.
The invoice form will be used as a drill, so the price is clear to both the buyer and the seller.
One of the other forms that we use is the invoice checker and it helps keep track of our expenses and our revenue and know what time and place they're at.
This is how the prices work. So if we get a larger sale, so they want more T-shirts, that means we can buy more T-shirts up at one time so that we cheaper for us, but we'll make more profit than usual.
These are the profit margins. As you can see up here, you can buy 12 T-shirts in one color for about 93 cents per T-shirt. And I'd say that's a pretty good deal. There are certainly over 431 T-shirts in things. And if each of them were to buy a T-shirt for students, then we would gain a little over a thousand dollars for scholarships. All right. There are about 2,400 students here in clubs, different services and everything. And I think that if we were to sell T-shirts to about every student in our club, we would make a lot of profits towards scholarships at the end of school year. We are going to use all of our profits towards scholarships that seniors here at Cascade can apply to. For example, depending on how much we make, we may be able to make four scholarships of around a hundred dollars or five scholarships of a thousand dollars. Any comments, questions or concerns?
I have a question. So you have, this is a great idea. I love it. I love having T-shirts. I love all that. My question is, you have all the sporting, football, basketball, baseball, wrestling. They all collectively have their own designs. My question is, are you wanting them to buy the shirts from you versus State and Sports or plus whatever down in Salem or what? Is that what you're trying to do?
Yes. Here in this club, we would be making in-house deals for everyone, which would lower the price a bit and they get a lot more cost affordable for different clubs and activities.
Okay. So they would come to you, purchase it, and then you in turn, the profit you get from the T-shirt that you buy at $15 instead of $19 goes into your scholarship fund.
Yep.
After you pay for expenses. Okay. So the only expenses you have are, well, the expenses you have are making the templates. And who designs those?
Either Mr. Roman or one of us. We're open to a lot of different ideas and if, even if any athletic directors or any different coaches would like to pitch in ideas, it would be more than glowing.
Okay. I had a question. Are you selling your shirts out of the student store?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay.
We're confirming.
Yeah, okay. I would think that that would be successful. What has been, how have people reacted to you guys having the T-shirts and being able to do them?
So far, we've had a pretty good reaction. We've had lots of different coaches, well, a few different coaches come to us and I think we had one order that was a little over a thousand T-shirts for a baseball or football camp.
Okay.
It was for the junior high. Coach Justin and I have bought them.
Okay. That's amazing. That's really nice. That's a lot of pushing and pressing to get that done.
So I got a question. On that shirt you just made, where did you get the decal that you pressed onto that shirt? Where, who makes those?
Transferexpress.com.
Okay. So you buy those and they come in bulk? How do they, how do you get your hands on those?
So Transferexpress.com, you can.
Now people online, they need to hear you.
Transferexpress.com. You can make the images. Depending on how many we make, the more we get, the cheaper they are. And they're very customizable. We can upload images. We can upload multi-color images. The sweatshirt was a multi-colored one. The other ones that we're all wearing are different single colored ones, which then make it also cheaper.
Right.
But everything is done online and they just ship it to us and we put it together.
So you've got piles of those decals, if you will, in.
You had one parcel though. There's a, I brought a small collection of them. So one, one each person.
Okay. Yeah, those, those sheets. Yeah.
So the Cascade Strong T-shirts that we got last month, this is a product of yours. Okay.
Okay, so.
Very nice. Okay.
No, that would take a lot more equipment and a lot more time and energy than I even know we got backwards. Certainly can do as a freshman add plus.
Okay.
So if a person came to you and said, I only want one shirt because I want to be special, would you do a one shirt thing?
Hard to do, but it can be done. It'll just cost a little bit more because you get the deals when we buy them all.
Right. I understand that, but it's like.
But can it be done? Yes.
I want to do this shirt and I want to have it so that if anybody wants it, then they can come to you and we can get more done, I guess, or something. That probably wouldn't happen. Huh. Okay. I'm excited.
Yeah.
I will tell you what was it, Ruth, 30 years ago? Cascade High. No, remember the group Connie.
Natural High.
Natural High. Yeah. Did T-shirts, but they did them out of their home. They didn't do it as a school project. This is much better because you guys learned so much from this. It's great.
We made our errors.
Well, you know. That's, that's awesome. It is. Okay.
Your willingness, young people, to do this makes you look very smart.
Yeah.
And when you look smart, your advisor looks smart and your principal looks smart. And your superintendent looks smart and your school board to a much lesser degree. So what you're doing here is good for all of us and I admire you very much.
Yes. Now, this is a great, I can see you growing with this and continuing to bring in younger classmates as, as it grows. And this is a huge thing. A thousand shirts?
Yeah.
And how long have you been in business?
September.
September?
Wait, September and then October.
Wow. That's impressive. Keep up the good work.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. That's very nice.
See, that's better than listening to me talk here about the activities. Just a few other things. Everybody got my report report. One of the things I really want to point out, so I'm wearing my Cascade Custom Shirt. Cascade Archery, another club that we have on campus, is actually sending, they qualified 19 archers for state, which is going to be on March 4th in Albany. Soon as I get the exact time, I will share it, but that'll be a really great event. Mr. Medlock and Mr. McDoan have been the advisors for that. And we worked with Ms. Thompson to turn an area out of Cascade Opportunity Center into an indoor archery range for this club. And so we have, like I said, 19 archers going to state. It's the first full year that they're doing this. So.
How many are in the club?
How many years? They started about mid-year last year, right?
How many in the club?
Oh, just over 20.
Okay.
And so it's a pretty good number. And so they're working within, going to Baton Albany, competing with, I think there's 50 archers total. So it's a really big number of our students going for the 50 that are participating. So once I get, like I said, a time, we'll do a social media spread and put everything out there also, so we can get some good backing for these manuals.
Great.
So we have our quilting club and after-school tutoring clubs that are working after school and have been, I mean, we have about four or five new students that joined Quilting Club last week. And so it's been really exciting to see those programs grow. Let's see. Another thing I want to touch on, our college credit now opportunities that we've started, Mr. Brill, our ag teacher, is in the process of working with Lynn Benton Community College and the Willamette Promise to add 12 college credit now opportunities under ag. And so it'll be really great over the next year to see just how many college credit opportunities there are. This term alone, we have over 40 students who are participating in college credit while they're in high school. And so that's looking with Ms. Blinner's classes in writing 115, 121. That's looking with Stephanie Cox and her health courses. And so next year, that number will continue to expand with the addition of new courses as they come. And then we also had our big career wheel event last week. We had 48 industries on campus represented and over 95 members of industry that were here, ranging from careers in the Department of Corrections, Almsoville Police Department, fire departments. We had five different unions here on campus, meeting students about what apprenticeships look like. Personal trainers, speech language pathologists, a wide variety of careers that students can talk and begin that exploration. And so that benefited students from Cascade, from Opportunity Center. So we had all of our juniors and seniors and that as well as some of the junior high grade added students. So lots of great things happening.
Was that during the day?
That was during the day.
Okay.
Participants showed up at nine o'clock to begin setup and so it went from nine 25 until two.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
Any questions you guys have for me? Sound pretty good. I come back in May. I'm happy to keep presenting great things.
Perfect. Yeah. We'll look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll head back now. Superintendent's report, Mr. Gill.
Good evening, everybody. Wanted to continue to, in my report, let you know that we continue to stay, the numbers that we've had, we have had very little drop in our overall student numbers during the course of the year. Led by the high school, they've got 59 more students than this time last year. That's going to continue with large class, freshman class that came in, eighth grade class is also large, everything access to that. And so we're going to have a couple of years here where the high school gets bigger over the course of the next 12, 14, 16 months. At the elementary level, we've grown in every building. Almsoville shows the biggest growth. We've got 41 more students this time, right now than this time last year. So those growth numbers are continuing across the board. At the same time, our class size average continues to stay fairly low. Almsoville's at 25 students per class average. Turner's at 24.4 and Cloverdale's at 23.5 student average. So we feel like while there are classes that do have 29 or 30, there are also classes that have 15, 20. So it balances out that way. We feel like that's a good number to have for our students. If we continue to grow with people moving in, then we'll continue to add staff as, as necessary. That's what we've done over the last 200 years. Legislature's in session. They are down there meddling around in educational stuff. Hopefully they won't make too many mistakes in the process. However, the, probably the best thing that happened was that the new governor, in her budget, before they started with the legislation, moved the K-12 biennial budget up from 9.5 to billion, 9.9 billion dollars, almost a $400 million increase to start. That means that advocates for K-12 education, they're, they're looking to get to 10.3 billion, so 9.9 to 10.3. They're hopeful that they will see an increase by talking with the legislature along the way. I can tell you that for Cascade situation, that number would, would be better for us to be above 10. I think that will help us in the process. Again, the 10.3 number is a number that school business officials like Scott went across the state and they said, if we rolled up all of our costs and continue to do the programs that we do, 10.3 billion is about what we need to get things done. It's going to be difficult for the legislature. They have a limited amount of money, but we're hopeful that we can advocate the right way. And then finally, speaking of budgets, we are already in the budget process. Mr. Pillman and I have bet two or three times, we'll begin to reach out to all departments and all buildings. And we'll start to build the budget for the 23, 24 school year. I kept on saying that, but that's where we're at. It's time. And then in May, we will bring that information to you. And then in June, you guys will approve it, assuming we make, we do all the right things in the process. So, questions?
When will we know from the legislature? I know we're building the budget, but we know this year from the legislature what we're going to get?
So the legislature goes till the end of June essentially, then they're required by law to be done. We are hopeful that before that time happens, they'll let us know. However, Mr. Pillar is an expert at this and he's done it a few times, not his first rodeo. So we will build a couple of different budgets that can match exactly what the legislature gives us. We make some, some financial assumptions. He's already working on that. And so we'll start with one assumption, the 9.9, and then we'll hope that maybe it goes a little bit higher. We'll take a look and see what we have. So we can talk about that as we go, but we'll keep you posted for sure. Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, finance director's report, Mr. Pillar.
Thank you. You have my written report in front of me, which detailed a lot about, you noticed that we, we are getting your state school fund payment, the double up payment. It's, it's coming, it's in the queue, so it's scheduled to arrive to us on Wednesday with the normal state school fund payments. So we'll double up there. So I detailed quite a bit of the, you know, what we kind of had to go through to get that to occur, but I'm glad that that's taken care of. We also, just to let you know, we set up our grant drawdowns last month. We're at a point now where we have, in the LGIP, where we are receiving about 3.75, 3.8% interest on that. So that's a pretty significant amount of interest. Some of the largest interest percentages that I've seen in my, in my career. When I first started about 15 years ago, 16 years ago in this chair, we were in the threes and the fours. And so being in the high threes now is pretty significant. So, so we really wanted to get that grant, all those grants drawn down, so we can get the interest off of those to kind of make up for that delay in that state school fund payment. As Mr. Gill said, we've started the budget process. It just seems like we go from one phase into another. We go from audit, which doesn't ever seem to end, to the budgeting process. But as he mentioned, just even the bump up to 9.9 is really helped for us. It takes a lot of the pressure off and allows us to continue to do similar programs at similar staffing levels. So we'll look forward to beginning that process in earnest, probably in about two weeks. Any questions for me?
Yes. So we have a problem with the current auditing company.
Yes.
Getting our information where it needs to be.
Correct.
And what are we going to do this coming year for our audit company?
Well, we have in, in our, in our discussions, we have confirmed they know our position. And yeah, and we have confirmed that we are going to hold them to contract. And we expect them to do the audit work for the current year.
Okay.
As well. So they just finished up last year's audit.
Okay.
So they're contracted in this year's audit.
Is that when it ends? At the end of '23?
Yeah. So the, the, it always, you audit, you audit the fiscal year and you actually start before the fiscal year ends. So we will begin the '22, '23 fiscal year audit. We will start that typically in April or May. There's some pre-audit type of work. And so we will know in a couple of months, really, how that is progressing. The majority of that work traditionally happens in the fall with a conclusion at the December 31st.
Okay.
And proper reporting by the early part of January.
Okay.
So that's, that's where we are now. Mr. Gill and I have talked a lot about what we're going to do and I've actually talked to a lot of my peers in other school districts. There are a number of peers that are as frustrated or equally as frustrated as we are, that are considering going out for bid. Unfortunately, you have to go out for an RFP because the audit fees are so expensive. They're typically a five-year contract and they run anywhere from $40,000 up to, you know, $80,000 to $90,000 annually for larger districts. So procurement law say we have to go out for bid for those. If we do go out for bid, I know that some of the local areas that have gone out for bid have not received any responses.
Scott, do we have to use someone local? I mean, can you go out of state? Can you go online?
Use someone who is licensed municipally in the state of Oregon.
Right.
So there are a few that are in Northern California, some in Idaho. One, at least that I know, that's Southwest Washington that does some work for, in Oregon.
Okay.
But we do have a maintained list of all of those. And I, and last month, when we were kind of in a pinch, I mean, I was on the phone talking to people, people that I knew at audit firms and just saying, hey, what are our options here?
Right. You think there might be an online option, but I understand they have to be licensed in the state. But you think at some point, folks will start jumping on that and get licensed, even though they're on the East Coast, just for the online.
You probably could, yeah, you probably could do that.
Right.
But what we're seeing is actually that list of municipal auditors shrinking, shrinking significantly. That's how we lost Wilcox, Aradondo or prior. They had some health issues and, and they decided to drop that. And I don't know if it just doesn't make them enough money or I'm not sure of the economics behind.
Okay.
Why they just want to do that.
So we have been through the next fiscal year, through '23, you said, the current folks. And in the past, I believe they've come in here and given us a report. Yes. Do we foresee them coming in to visit us for a meeting?
That is, that is part of the work that they are supposed to do because they don't work for me. They work for you.
Right.
And however, if you recall, the prior year, the '21, '22 audit didn't get completed until October.
Right.
So they are, yes, they are due for a visit to you. I, I, I'm not expecting them to come. They certainly could come in a mayor and June meeting to present their audit findings. We expect this year's audit, while we've submitted the information to ODE, we still have a few things to wrap up on, with a single audit that we have to complete.
Would it be fair to let them know we'd like them to come in?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. I did tell them that last time as well. So.
Yeah, I think.
We will set that expectation.
Okay. And then, and you mentioned the interest that we're getting at three-point, high threes right now. Other than interest, is there anything that they're not having the reports filed timely? Did it cost us anything? Did we get penalized on any other monies? Did we have to?
No.
I'm saying, is there any other direct cost that we incurred because of their late filing, other than the interest we didn't earn on that money?
No, no fines that I'm aware of. So.
Okay. So, so the only thing we didn't get was the interest for the month when that, those funds weren't in the account.
I calculated that about 5,400 bucks.
Okay.
Are we holding them responsible for that? Can we?
We haven't decided.
Okay.
When, when they have, our attorney has determined that they are in breach. They've maintained that status. Some of our legal position is probably not best suited for the public board meeting, but we.
Right, understood, understood. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent's report. It's Markio.
Do you have my report in your package? I'm not going to go through everything unless you have any specific questions.
I do, in fact. So your report says that you have, there's, I think, I'm trying to find it here. There was $20,000 used towards training. I lost it. Thank you. Who, who do you find attends those more? Is it the new folks or is it the veteran teachers that attend the trainings?
It's been a combination. We haven't had this type of money available for a long, long time. I've had quite a few special education staff certified and classified that were just excited at the opportunity of being able to go and get some additional training. It's probably been a little heavier on special education staff and it's been new and old.
Okay, good. That was my only question. Thank you.
Only question. Okay. Just, just to highlight, it's that time of year. We're going to start ramping up for hiring season. I do have three job fairs scheduled for March and April, and I will have administrators coming with me to those job fairs. Also, we're going to be starting negotiations, April and May. Usually tend to start in May, once the legislature and the governor's education budget is finalized a little bit more. Classified is salary benefits and two articles. And certified is salary benefits and three articles. So they're not full openers. But I'm sure it will keep us busy through some of those. Those are the only updates that I have. Do you have any other questions for me?
I have a question about subs and I don't know if you're the one to ask about that. Are we still continue to have problems getting subs in all the buildings?
We do.
Okay.
As do all of the other districts in the state of Oregon.
I'm just going to ask, is there a sub shortage?
There is a sub shortage. Yeah.
Okay.
Back in, I want to say 2019, I believe we had, there were probably over 850 subs that were working with edge staff. And that has gone down about half. We've lost about half of their subs.
Okay.
Part of it is, you know, you had retired, a lot of retired teachers that were subbing and with COVID, they're like, nope, not going to do it. We have vaccine mandate. Still in effect for anybody who's employed, employed in a school district. So if you have people that don't want to do a religious or medical exception and they don't want to get the vaccine, they are, they can't work in education. And then you have people that were just done because it's been so difficult in the classrooms with parents and students and. Because it's been so difficult in the classrooms with parents and students and. So it's been a.
See that to continue?
There continues to be conversation on the educator shortage, both substitutes and regular. I know Pete has had conversations with Corbin. And it was, was it science you said? They haven't had anybody for, for three years.
Wow.
Get a, go through their program with the science endorsement.
Oh my. Wow.
Yeah.
So our administrators are sitting here and they're going, yes, I'll be in classrooms tomorrow.
Yeah.
Is that kind of how it works?
Well, we had, we had a situation at the high school where our administrators were all teaching a science class. Because we had two of our teachers that were out. And so they stepped in and we just, we couldn't find a substitute that was able to do it long-term. And so they stepped in and we're subbing.
Mr. Rasmussen and Ms. Melissa were science teachers for four, five weeks this quarter.
Thank you.
All of them took.
But Dawn, is it better this year than last year? No, Sammy, I don't, okay.
Is it worse this year than last?
Debbie says it's better.
There's, there's people who are out less and we have a pretty good list of reoccurring subs who like working with us.
Okay.
Whereas last year, four people were out, mandatory quarantines.
Yeah, since the, the quarantine has been shortened to just five days basically. And people aren't getting as sick as they were. We just don't have quite as many absences, but we still have, we still have issues with getting subs.
So we use a third party that our subs work for, right?
Yes.
Do all districts in the state do use that third party or do most of them, how, how are other schools set up?
Smaller districts will go with a third party because it's a lot easier to do it that way. We would have to basically hire an additional person here to manage all of that.
Right.
And we wouldn't have access to as many substitutes.
Right.
Okay.
The larger school districts have, they take care of it themselves.
Sure. And who sets the rate of pay?
That is set by substitute pays that by the state of Oregon, I believe, yes.
So.
But districts can make it more.
So is Salem Kaiser paying the same thing for a sub that we are?
That I don't know.
I don't know this year, so most districts pay the same.
Right.
But like, like last year, Woodburn really struggled to get subs, so they decided to offer more.
Well, that's my question is, if money talks, if, if we're that struggling, if, if we offered twenty percent more, fifty percent more, would more people step up and be available?
Well, because we go through edge staff, we don't have that option. Edge staff pays them, edge staff is their employer.
Right, but if we paid edge staff more, they certainly.
I don't think we can actually do that because we contract with the ESD.
Seems restrictive.
Which Woodburn did not.
Yeah, the larger school districts are in a much better place to be able to have their own people. They have access to a lot more subs because they're in larger communities.
Then if we're, if we're contracted with this third party to supply us with substitutes, is it like the, the auditors, where they have an obligation contractually to get a substitute here?
They did, they do not promise a one hundred percent fill rate. They do go out and recruit. I get a report once a month with all of the opportunities that they take to go out and recruit and get substitutes to work for us.
They, they have come, so we go to meetings, Dom will go to a meeting at the ESD icon and they come and do their spiel to us. They do a fairly good job even in these difficult conditions to get the fill rate as high as they can.
Yeah.
The, the opposite would be, it's kinda like what you already heard, heard, it would be on to us. And what that really means is every secretary that works for the administrator in this room would be there even earlier on the phone and we.
Right, no, I understand that, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around this.
Those days were not pretty.
Yeah.
Right.
And even places like Woodburn, Corvallis, even Salem, they have trouble getting substitutes. There were a couple of days, I believe in December, right before we could break that Salem closed because of lack of subs.
And what is our rate a day right now for a sub?
Percentage of the average entry level salary scale for everybody.
Dawn, do we, this, do we as a district want to think about adding, like full-time sub positions? I know we have two right now, but do we wanna look at adding another one or two if we could get somebody? And they get benefits?
They do get benefits, yes, they are temporary employees for the school year.
Okay.
But they do get benefits. We do have two substitutes here at the secondary level. We do not have a particular person at the elementary level, although we do tend to use our, our online teacher in the afternoon when she's not teaching classes, she's able to fill some positions. The worry is with those positions, I mean, you're, you're talking hundred thousand dollars salary and benefits. So if you've got three, four people, that's three, four hundred thousand dollars and that has to come from somewhere. We've been paying for our temporary subs with S R money, I believe, for the past couple of years. And so that's something that we're gonna have to take a look at when that S R money goes away. Are we gonna be able to continue to have long-term substitutes in our building? And is it, is it a benefit to, to have them?
Okay, anything else? Thank you.
Is that something that legislation is discussing? I mean, if, if that's obviously a national issue is lack of teachers.
They're having a conversation about retention and recruitment. They're trying to tackle it from that perspective, but not specifically that. So how do you make, how do you make getting credits through college is easier? How do you connect the dots to that? Do you do a CTE strand in high school for education itself? There's lots of those kinds of kid situations and conversations. First generation students that wanna go to college, how do you make that easier so that they go back into the education?
That's years and years down the road, that's not.
They're building a fifty thousand foot level concept about how that works.
And there is a group of superintendents, HR people that belong to the Educator Advancement Council. And that's a piece that they're working on and the Oregon School Personnel Association that I belong to. Also, we talk a lot about educator shortage and what is it that we can be doing? Most of us really feel like that it needs to be a state initiative and not an individual district initiative. And until that changes, we're gonna continue to have the issues that we have. Anything else?
Just to thank you to all of you tomorrow who are in a classroom at your office and the next day and the next day.
Absolutely.
We're thinking about you guys. I'm not qualified, so don't call me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn.
Okay, for the high school principals' report, Mr. Rasmussen.
You have my report in front of you. I don't wanna take too much time because we presented this morning or earlier at the beginning of this. Things went well. Our student council did order you guys some gifts. And they didn't get here in a long time for last, the last meeting, but they're right over here and I'll just turn back to the meeting. They wanted to make sure you got those. We're, we're doing well. Administrator's a busy night up in North Marion. We have a contest up there, so. State testing starting and we're back in that regular role. We do the B-section students this trimester. We're taking English and math. We have to get them done now because they don't have a B class in the third trimester. So that's happening. We got some great news on our, our statistics that we track, graduation rate, freshman on track rate. You have those in front of you, so really good stuff happening. Any questions? I don't wanna take too much of your time.
Think we're doing great. Thank you for all your work. Appreciate it. Thank you. High school assistant principal's report, we had that already, Ms. Lisa. Junior high principals' reports. This is Lada. Hi.
So you have my report and I focused a lot on teamwork. And there were three areas that I didn't get a brag about partially because we haven't had it yet. And so I just wanted to talk about how teamwork is just continuing in the junior high and we're very thankful. I Ready is a intervention math program that we've been using. The elementary started it and then we've been able to bring it up to the junior high. And I very much appreciate Katie Menzoni coming and working with my math department and helping them to understand all the ins and outs of the I Ready program. We pretty well use it as an intervention, but when we have some basic skill math kiddos in the classes, how can we modify or adapt a lesson to be more at their level? Fractions might be too difficult with what was done in class, but they still need to learn fractions and denominators and numerators and everything. So what are lessons within the program that we can use? It's also a great resource in helping to fill holes that might have happened and go so very much or how long they stayed online. You know, when teachers were teaching math and in there or checking out or playing video games with their buddy. So we know that there's lots of holes and I Ready is a great way. It tracks how kids are doing and then it will notice, oop, here's a hole and it will start lessons on how to backfill and support these kids in these areas. So we are just getting ready to start our second diagnosis and I look forward to seeing the growth that the kids have made. And I'd be interested to check how our fifth graders did from last year to, you know, when they end of sixth graders, how much growth that they need altogether. Another area on Friday, we had such huge support. We had our grandparents' luncheon come back. We, it started in nineteen seventy-four. I found some article in Statesman Journal. It started seventy-four. And then there was another article that was done in like ninety-three and only forty grandmas and grandpas showed up for a senior luncheon. And on Friday, we had a hundred and ninety-eight, last I counted, grandmas and grandpas walked through our door. One kiddo had ten sitting at her table. It was just amazing. There was a little sixth grader dressed in his little suit on Friday came in with four packages of flowers. I'm like, do you have a lady friend? He's like, no, it's for my grandmas and grandpas. And sure enough, each grandma, grandpa got a dozen flowers and it was just awesome. But huge, huge shout out, number one. So Brian Slagle and Tom Patacic, they were the one who coordinated everything. And neither one of them had seen it from the organization side ever, because it's been four years since we've done it, pre-COVID. So that was a lot of learning on their side. Ally Greenwell and Mackenzie Smith provided musical entertainment before because we have to coordinate with the high school and get everybody's lunches in and then it's time for the kids to eat with grandma and grandpa. So the grandparents got to be entertained by the high school jazz band and then our seventh and eighth grade choir sang for them. And then it was time for our kids and grandmas to go to lunch. Megan Tamra, they helped coordinate finding kids with their grandparents in the chaos. Having grandmas and grandpas find the auditorium, number one, was a challenge. Number two, having them find the junior high was a challenge because it's Googling. Many grandmas and grandpas had never been to the junior high, so that was a lot of phone calls and you know where the street is? No. So Megan Tamra fielded lots of phone calls just to get them to our site. I think we only lost three and we managed to get them here in the end, so that was great. And then lots of calling, where's the kiddo, you know, oh, you forgot, you know, let's hold him or her added class. Last of all, Chris Bosch and his cafeteria, huge shout out. They, I, I think they made five hundred meals and I don't know how many people were just so thankful of what they, just being there and available and so many positive comments. They were just, it tickled to be there. And we had talked, I had talked with Tom and Brian about maybe bringing Turner Retirement or Marion in the states. I don't know that we have home, honestly, it was full and what a great problem to have. So that was great. We only had one complaint and it was because we were taking requests, the jazz band didn't take requests and we didn't play anything from the nineteen sixties. I did have a little guy bragging and saying it was just amazing. And I asked him, so who are you here with? You know, who are your grandkids? He goes, well, it's my fiancés and I'm not really sure their names. He was there and having a great time and it was just truly a positive experience all the way around. And last of all, outdoor school, that is a huge team project coming underway. Many of you have been there back, helping with dishes and packing your kiddos here and getting everything ready. Sixth grade will start teaching their curriculum, you know, pre-curriculum before too long. Normally, the beginning of March is when we're gonna get started. Catherine Illian, a huge, huge supporter and it helps get all the high schoolers and college kids that, you know, trained to be up there. So we're getting there. The parent meeting will happen the week before spring break and we will be heading out. I think it's April tenth through the thirteenth or fourteenth, so we are getting ready to go, but that's a huge endeavor. And we're looking forward to it. So it, once again, it will be a day camp partially because they lost some cabins. And partially, even when they do get them all up and running, I'm not sure we're gonna fit overnight there just because we're so big. I know Catherine Illian and John Schmelzer toured multiple camps a couple of years ago when we, we were getting big. And there's not anything that they've seen close enough to us that is comparable to Camp Tadmore. So we're really gonna have to see what meets our expectations, you know. And Camp Tadmore now has some yurts and some other things, but they don't have the heating facilities. And after a week of snow last year, we definitely need some heat to get those kiddos, you know, warmed up after the fact. A lot of snow fishing happened and ice fishing, so this year we need to, you know, make sure that we're ready to go before, you know, staying the night happens again. Need to make sure that this always can meet our needs, so we're getting big and, but that's a good problem to have, so we'll take it. And as a thank you, we literally just got these in on Friday. Camp Tadmore's a day, so you can put all your goodies in it and I love these suckers because I put all my stuff in it. So any questions?
I think things are going very well, it sounds like.
It's a good place to be.
Good, you're very happy to hear that. Me too. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thomasville Principals' Report, Mr. Minzer.
Good evening. I will try to be brief as well because we have some folks who only get to present one time a year behind me, so I know they're excited to do that. I promised last board report that I, next time I'd share our middle of the year data, which I provided in the report. Reading has kinda flatlined a little bit and we knew to expect something after COVID. We didn't know really what that would look like, so this is a really good spot for us to make some changes systemically and then also instructionally. Number one, we finally have a close to full intervention staff. So with that, we have all these new folks coming in. How do we make sure we train them and everyone has fidelity with how they're presenting that small group instruction? That's one thing we're working on. The other thing we're working on in results, this data is we're changing our master schedule a little bit, which is always a little tough to do in the middle of the year, but I think it's what's best for kids. We think it's what's best for kids. And we're not gonna make adult problems kid problems. So we're changing our master schedule, we're adding more time for small group instruction in the afternoons for every single grade. I'm hopeful with that and some added instruction, training, fidelity. We see those scores not just flatlined, but start to move some of those kids that who are below grade level above grade level. In math, as a school and I would say as a district, I had a chance to look at our district numbers too. We're doing fairly well. Primarily kindergarten and first grade are knocking it out of the park, which is really, really cool to see. Any questions about any of that?
How do you test the reading? Do you do it every couple of weeks or how? How we, how are we gonna know when this line starts?
Question. We have three major benchmarks throughout the year, beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. That's done through a, a test called DIBELS, which is the Dynamic Indicator of Basic Early Literacy Skills.
Nice word.
And we also switched this year to touchscreen. We used to do it paper pencil. And that was one thing we were talking about when we were looking at the data, was that shift from paper pencil, what we have done for the last fifteen, twenty years? That shift from, from paper pencil to using the touchscreen, did that account for some change in the data too? So now we're on fully touchscreen Chromebooks. We sit one-on-one with the kid, they read a passage, we mark errors on that. We don't have to upload stuff into the system anymore and we're able to print reports. That's one thing we do. For kids who are below grade level, we progress monitor them. So we sit with them at least once every two weeks, sometimes it's weekly. And we go through that, that similar testing and assessment to make sure that they are meeting those growth, growth goals.
So what other grade do you test? Do you test fifth grade or just? Every single grade?
Yep, both in math and reading.
Okay, all right.
And we try to line them up around the same time throughout the year as well.
Okay.
So on this report, you've got the beginning of year, middle of year for this year. We won't look back last year, the last couple of years. If we went back like, and I'm getting, you didn't look into this, but I'll just ask if you have any idea. If we looked at like two thousand nineteen stats, how does this compare? How, how on track are we with what we were doing prior to COVID?
We did look, we did look back at that. We call that the before times.
Right, yeah.
Different kids, different world we live in. But during the before times, we saw much better growth.
Okay.
From that beginning.
From beginning to, to the middle.
Correct.
You saw higher?
Higher growth.
Okay, okay. And, and what are we going to, what do we attribute that to?
I think honestly, there's creating some more time in the master schedule to have those small intervention groups. I mean, some of the best instructions happen when you have an adult with a smaller group of kids. Working on those basic literacy skills, working on the retail, working on fluency, all of that stuff. COVID kind of took some of that time away from us. We're adding it back in.
That's my question. So you had more of that in nineteen than we do now?
Yes.
And we're able to identify that perhaps that's enough of variance to?
By March first, that time will be back in.
Okay.
That's our plan.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
What is it that you're not doing to create the time?
There, number one, first and foremost was staff. We didn't have a full staff. Now we have closer to a full staff. And I think just the amount of absences in the building kind of left us with plugging the holes, right? We don't have enough fingers to plug the holes. So some of that time shrunk. Now that we have closer to a full staff, we have some more flexibility, some more breathing room where we can add some more of that time back in.
So that is a student who meets whatever criteria, gets pulled out of their regular instruction, whatever's going on in their classroom, meets in a small group with an adult.
So we say all kids go to RTI at Almaville. So RTI is the system. We have kids who are pulled out who are below grade level to work one-on, it's not one-on-one, but small group instruction with an interventionist. And then kids who stay in the classroom are still doing reading with their teacher. Maybe they're doing read itself, maybe they're doing decodables. Maybe they're working on sight words in the lower grade levels. So everyone's doing some sort of reading instruction in small group during that time.
So they don't feel like they're missing out on something?
Correct. Or you don't feel different as a kid because I have to leave my classroom to go to someone else?
Exactly, right, yeah.
Mr. Lee?
No.
Okay. Other questions?
I have one. Do you have enough adults to work with all the small groups?
Yes, we're, well, we're getting closer. We, we have one or two more positions to fill. I'm really excited for math. I know we're kind of focused on reading right now. But for the first time last week, we have a fully staffed math intervention team.
Wow.
That's, those are positions that have been open since the last spring. So really excited. We actually hired two Cascade grads. Someone that I went to elementary school with there, applied to a job as well. So really cool. Yeah.
Nice.
All right. I have one more question.
Sure.
A few months ago, the elementary principal sort of presented yourselves in a row and said, hey, we're going to coordinate, we're going to work together. We're going to kind of try to align the educational experiences from one school to the next. Has that continued?
Yeah, I, I would say, and Lisa, Lisa's not, oh, Lisa's right behind me. She's right there. She, I would say we, we work together at a, at a very high and efficient level. We meet, I would say, at least once a month in an elementary PLC for principal group. We do our best. It's hard to, to really carve out the time. But equity among the three elementary schools is one of our biggest focus. And we, we like to say every school is the best school. So we want all of those opportunities that every kid in the Cascade District Elementary is going to have a similar experience instructionally and then also that enrich. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. For H, Almaville Elementary Principal's Assistant Principal's Report.
Hi. So for those that don't know me, my name is Jody Mitchell. I'm the newest Assistant Principal at Almaville Elementary. This is my first year as an admin, it's my first year in Cascade District. I'm really loving it here and love the school and the team I get to work with and the community and staff. So thank you for giving me this opportunity. One of the things I wanted to point out along with some of the things we're doing for addressing our members and is we create an opportunity for instructional rounds with our staff. We, we'd like to, our goal is to get every staff member to participate throughout the year. It takes us getting subs in to float around. And then you release the staff, staff members to get to go and observe in another classroom. Us administrators joined them. And then we debriefed afterwards. What did we see? What were some of the strengths, some of the strategies used? And then we asked them to go, what are you going to take away and implement within the next day or two and start implementing in your room? We had ten teachers that participated this last time. And they got to observe at least two, most of them three different classrooms over a course of three days. And that was really positive feedback from all of our staff. They loved it. They really enjoyed getting to go and see. It created an opportunity for them to ask questions in our, in our staff to get to show their strengths and us to pull from within to build our professional development skills. So any questions?
I have just a quick one. When, when this observation time is going on and there's a meeting afterwards to talk about what was presented in skills and, you know, is the teacher that was being observed involved in that meeting?
No, we don't have enough subs to release the teacher that was being observed. It was just enough to get us the subs so that we could release the teachers to go and observe. But we did, I know we followed back individually with each of those teachers with feedback from our observations.
Sometimes I know that when a teacher is observing another teacher, it's a really great opportunity. If they liked what they were seeing, that teacher that's probably been doing that for a while has an opportunity to say, and then I do this, this, this. Or if this doesn't work, you can go this direction or whatever. And so sometimes.
I know some of those conversations teachers took upon themselves to have, like after school or during a prep time, they found each other and kind of followed up with some things they saw. So those did happen.
Right.
But not formally. We couldn't quite make that happen. Yeah, some bit.
Yeah.
So I have a comment, not a question. I just want to commend you for the debriefing part. I think it's important to talk about what everybody saw or learned to take away from that. So that's, that's a good tool. So nice job.
Sounds like you're having a good time with your behavior and everything else.
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you. Turner Elementary Assistant Principal's Report.
Hey, everybody. Sarah, there we go. So it's my second year as Vice Principal at Turner Elementary. Loving every moment of it. It's going great. I just want to expand on a few things in my board report that you guys have there. On a step up to writing, you would ask about alignment with the elementaries. That is a program, a new writing program. Since I've been at Turner Elementary for seventeen years, we have not had a writing curriculum. So that's super exciting. Overdale has the same program. And then I think Almaville is adopting it now or next year. Let me know. So that's cool. So any, any elementary student will have that program. And as we just finished our last training with our teachers last Wednesday with the specialists from the program, and it's vertically aligned. And so that's great, the lessons build on each other. And there's, we just noticed a couple of cool features with it as far as it works with any reading program. So we're currently looking at adopting a new reading program. And this writing program works well with it. And it's also aligned with Avid Strategies. So Avid's not just at the high school. But this program has two column notes, has a number, number of Avid Strategies, which is a plus. I mentioned in my board report, the book club that we'd started at Turner Elementary. Just wanted to emphasize that. That's been just a great experience. I've done book clubs with kids in my classes, but never with adults. So it's just a very, I clear out my desk in my office. We put our chairs in circle and put things of chocolate in the middle. So that always gets teachers there. Probably about eight teachers that come to the meetings. And it's just a great opportunity that book is better than carrots and sticks. Instead of dangling these ones, those things in front of kids, it's really about building teacher, deeper relationships with kids. And it's just, it's been a great experience to hear from other teachers just sharing their experiences, how to help improve classroom management and then to share that with the younger teachers. Just a few more things, I won't pick up too much of your time. We had our school carnival this last Saturday. So we were thinking for people that, you know, on a rainy Saturday, if they're not doing anything, if they wanted to go to a good old fashioned carnival. And we had a, you know, a few hundred people show up. It was a great experience. And just those old fashioned carnival games, popcorn, cotton candy. It was very well attended. Didn't violate any fire codes. So, okay. Anyway.
You're not under oath.
And then as far as the LCL, I just wanted to mention that at the end, social and emotional learning, that's one of the most important things we do. If kids are not present to learn, they won't learn. And we have two great counselors. I just wanted to publicly recognize them. Mr. Katnaugh has been an incredible resource for years. And then we also have Catherine Hinkle, part-time, which she joined us this year. And those two were just great as a team. And they've been wonderful to work with. So any questions for me?
Your science day, how did that go this year?
It's great, great. Kid happy, interactive. I'm glad we're still doing those. It does take extra time for teachers to plan those. And we'll do one in the spring too. But we're going to try to bring more people from the outside in to get teachers to relate with that.
Does anyone still have the hatchery? Do you still turn fish loose?
Yes, we actually, eggs are hatching today.
Awesome.
We've done the salmon before and the trout, we help trout eggs better.
Trout are easier?
Try as we speak, yes.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Awesome.
We can release right there.
I know, that's so much fun for the kids to see him go. Okay. Thank you for doing that. Thank you very much.
You can see I'm matching on Facebook right now.
Really? Oh, my gosh.
Of course you can.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Director of Technology Report.
Mr. Essex.
My report, what are you? One of the big things we've been working on, and I've probably mentioned this before, was security cameras getting on the topic of security. Trying to beat our intercom system, trying to lock the lock on doors that we install at the elementary schools over the summer, just the cameras and the buzzer systems along the same lines. But when I was started here, we had just started putting in the new system. It's me, those are brand new cameras. That was fifteen years ago. So when you look at the quality of those cameras now compared to what they have, it's night and day. So what we've been doing the last six months is upgrading our system. So we've upgraded, we have a, we have a fleet of about eighty-five cameras, give and take. There's always one or two that are down that we're, we're working on and all that. But about eighty cameras on the main campus. And forty, fifty of those are just, they're working. But you can tell you had a red shirt on and that's about it. You can't really tell who it was and all that. But we got a brand new system. I don't have it ready to show up for you. I want to, I want to say that on my text, who's present to you, kind of show you everything about it. Because it's, it's really awesome. It's really nice. You can actually see everything. You see the outline of the student, outline of the car, the license plate on some of the cameras. So we're implementing that now. There's still a few minor bugs we have to work out. Some of the, some of the cameras that aren't recording on motion. We're working on ironing, ironing that stuff out. And then a big thing is we can actually keep our storage for many months. Before it was a week and a half, maybe two weeks. Now we can go back two and a half months. We just upgraded our system with a hundred dollar hard drive, which would increase us for another month. So potentially, we could have footage three or four months. And that would help out during the summertime. If something happened in the beginning of the summer, we come back and, oh, it could have happened a few years ago. Somebody took some stuff out of our, our computer lab, it's still some hard drives. And we didn't notice that until summer was over. By that time, all of it was gone. That's going to be, that's gone now. So we're going to have all that just to look back on, maybe something happened back then. So that's been exciting to get going. One of the requirements I had to get the new system is that I had to work with our existing cameras. We have a bunch of cameras that are older, they still work. So I didn't want to have to tear apart everything. I wanted to have it integrated with our system. And a lot of the companies don't offer that. They want, they want to come in and bulldoze what you have. Get in their system, get a monthly, everybody wants a monthly fee, a subscription base. I didn't want to do that. I want to have somebody in-house. But if we stop paying for it, we would still have access to it. So we were with a company, Panasonic. Excellent. We hired a, the local company PSA, they do our alarm monitoring. I think they're working on installing the doors over the spring break. They did the buzzer system at the elementary school. So they're the ones that, they're the ones that installed all the systems and camera system. We're still working on them, with them now. But the majority of it is all up and running. It's really, it's really, just know that. Yes, we have that footage, some of the, some of the old footage we see, oh, we didn't get it because there wasn't recording or it was too fast. And that, just having that relief is, that's relief. So that, the annual fee and like I said, quality is amazing. It's, I want to show you some pictures, you guys will be amazed just before and after, just the same, same camera location. But where five years ago, you look at the quality. And like I said, you could tell a picture or you could tell the color of what they're wearing. You can actually see if they have, you know, wrinkle or not. And I love the ability to see license plate. When they pull on the, pull on the gate, hey, whose car was that? Not anything's going to happen, but we can at least get them to the authorities and they go from there. So that's, that's, that's out, that's up and running, decided to have that. Another thing along security is Chromebook monitoring. We've been, I told you about Chromebooks. We pushed out so many Chromebooks the last few years. I've talked about the network bandwidth that that's required. We've upgraded our systems to accommodate all that. One of the big things is classroom management, monitoring what the students are looking at on the Chromebooks. And that's been a request to me for many, many years to get the Chromebooks running. So that's one thing we're working on now is to have that up and running for the next school year. Just to have a teacher be able to say, okay, I have thirty Chromebooks in our room. I'm going to push this button. I'm going to be able to see what the thirty students are doing at any given time. There's a lot of stuff, there's a lot of work we have to do in the back, in the backend to get that ready. We have to, you know, organize every Chromebook, get it assigned to that teacher, make sure those Chromebooks are not shared with the teacher next time, stuff like that. So we're working on that now. We hope to have that, we're going to have that implemented, at least for a trial run at the beginning of next year. And then when that, when that works properly, then we'll push it out to, to where it's needed. It's not going to be district wide right away. But I, I kind of assume that once a teacher hears, oh, we can do this, okay. And then they're going to want it. So we're going to probably want to push it out to district wide. So that's another thing we're working on for security. Yeah, that's one of the things. We're working the intercom system. So the intercom system that the elementary schools and the bell system at the high school, The elementary schools and the bell system at the high school, that's being, we have an old system. So we've had many bid come out. And give it, you know, give us quotes on what they would do to upgrade. Everybody just wants to demolish it and start over. We're working, trying to go back and forth with them now, trying to get a new system at both places. The high school, the bell systems are not working properly. And then the elementary school, some of the intercom systems need to be upgraded. That's another thing we're working on with. With security in mind. And I know you had asked about the auditorium screens and all that. Good news is that we're getting auditoriums, the auditorium at Homestead installed on Monday. They're gonna come out on Monday.
Okay.
Right here. And then after the plague gets, there's some plays going on, our presentation going on in the high schools. So we're gonna wait till that's done. And then they'll come out to, to get that going. And we're still on plan for this quarter to get everything installed at both Homestead and the high school. Any questions?
I have a quick question. So we have eighty-five cameras gonna be up. Who monitors those? Are they monitored in-house?
Yeah, so we have, we have tech has access to, maintenance have access to, all the admins now have access to it. The only thing that we're monitoring now is bandwidth, just with increase of quality. Our bandwidth goes down and so that, we have a limit, so much limit. So we have twenty people all streaming the same high quality. Camera footage at one time. It really puts a little on our network. And so we're trying to find that balance where, how many cameras? Can you stream at one time and still not bring down the whole network? So we're working on that now. Right now, it's all the admin's maintenance and then tech.
So any, like a computer screen can have ten pictures or twenty pictures of different.
Try to bring it up on here and stuff. I didn't want to interfere with everything. Yeah, but on here, you can have twenty pictures, thirty pictures, kind of all of. The more pictures you have, the more bandwidth it's gonna.
Right.
Bring in. So that's why it's like, oh, four or five is probably a good number to have. But once you have twenty, thirty cameras. That really starts drawing in the balance, but you can't have that.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Do we have a guess how many machines during COVID, like the, the Chromebooks that went out? How many of those died a terrible death when they were out of, in students?
How many died that? Because what happens, I, I purchased a lot on eBay and these ones I purchased on eBay were. Pretty much into life and we bought. Six months or whatever, but we needed devices to have. So all those devices are gone. That, those were. On eBay right now, three hundred and seventy-five, I know just they lasted for about eight months.
Right.
It got us through what happened.
We got, they give a good one.
Yeah, they still work. Like I know Turner has some Chromebooks that still work, but out of date. Half stopped working. But you can't always test all of it. If it does work. After a while, they just stopped working. Yeah. Under five hundred, but I know, I know at least three fifty from the ones we purchased. Were just recycled.
Just done.
Have we gotten them all back?
Yeah, all of them back and all ones got back. Just turned around and.
So we have a few items in your packet this evening that require board action. The first is we have a retirement. Chris Albert is fully retiring. He retired from hers last year, but he is going to be done at the end of this school year. Then we also have a resignation from Corinne Louie. She was a math teacher at the high school. She's been on leave this school year and she has decided to stay home and be mom. So she is resigning and not coming back for the upcoming school year. And then finally, in your packet. And we have the licensed employee renewals that are recommended by the administrators. These are all of our. Licensed employees, teachers, administrators. Probationary moving to probationary two or three, and then probationary three moving to contract status. And then renewing those teachers that are currently contract status to another contract year. Just note, you do have some temporary employees listed. Those are automatically non-renewed. Because they were either hired after the start of the school year, so they're considered temporary. Or it was a temporary position to begin with. And we weren't sure if it was a position that would continue into the next school year. So it's not because they did anything wrong. It's. Just the nature of what it is. They're temporary and they don't get renewed.
Are any of them, can I ask, I'm going to be retired? Or do we need to wait on that?
We, we'll have to wait because what we'll have to do, any of the positions that were temporary. That we are bringing back, we have to post.
Okay.
And then those, if those employees that are currently in those positions, if they want to. Reapply for those positions, they can do so.
Okay.
And then if we do hire them, then we would bring them back to you as an official rehire for the upcoming school year.
Got it. Okay.
Any questions about any of those? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Board policy updates, immediate reactions, immediate actions, the girl.
So you have two different policies with you tonight. One, the first one I have, I have Ms. Johnson here as well. Because they both kind of touch on special education areas. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain the basics. If you want more, more deeper into the weeds, she's the person to answer those questions. The first one is a change in medications. We had a policy that I think we approved three or four years ago. That did not have the inclusion of Narcan, which is something that you use to respond to drug situations. And our world has changed, and that is a situation that you read about, it's seen on the news all the time. And so we have decided to go ahead and add that paragraph back. Our nurses recommended it, highly recommended it. As a matter of fact, our nurses wanted it. The day she handed it to us. So she wanted, they wanted to make sure that it's in there and that we were able to go ahead and use Narcan when we need to. On campus. God forbid we ever have to go there, but we need to make sure we have it. It will save time and energy while we're calling nine-one-one. Will help us in the process. Obviously, they'll go through a process of making sure that they are trained. We'll go through that, but we want that in the policy.
Darren, how many people are trained for that, to administer that?
Right now, currently in our own, it's just our nurses right now. Our plan is to actually train all the administrators and the administrative assistants as well.
Okay. Thank you.
See, the weeds. She's got the weeds. So I appreciate that. And then the second one is early entrance to kindergarten. We have a policy, we go through a process. Ms. Johnson started with, down that path, had all the elementary administrators have a conversation. They would like to make the adjustments to that. Would you like to speak to that at all?
Yeah, so previously what would happen is apparently make a request for their child to be screened for early kindergarten entrance. It can also be first grade as well. That process requires first screening, so a meeting with the kindergarten teacher. And administrator. And then if this child passed that screening where we felt like was a good candidate. Then we would refer them on for additional cognitive and academic testing. And previously, it was a special education assessment team that did all of that. That takes hours. Of our already stretched thin time. And what we are finding is that most of our students. That we were passing on to that second stage were not actually qualifying for early entrance. So we were testing these students and spending hours to tell parents they did not meet the criteria of scoring in the ninety-seventh percentile. And in order to go into kindergarten. What we were also finding is that several of those kiddos, once they were in kindergarten, later down the road. Were actually being referred for special education for learning disabilities. And so we decided, talking to the entire crew with our ever-growing population already in the kindergarten level across our district. That we knew to come up with a better policy that supported our classroom teachers, students and families. I researched several different surrounding district policies to find one that would best fit also the cascade philosophy. And so reaching out to all the building principals. We talked about, you know, what, what's something that we want to look at? We didn't want to say no, no, no kindergarten, early entrance to kindergarten at all. Because we didn't feel like that was appropriate, because there's always an exception. And the first thing we agreed on is it's gotta be in the month of September. From September one to October one, those are the only times, you have to be five for regular kindergarten before September one or on school one. After that, that's when you have to apply for it. The second thing is, is that we really need the parents to get their own assessments completed. To do a request and independent evaluation, wherein outside team is actually doing the cognitive and the academic testing. And rather than looking at the ninety-seventh percentile, which is essentially tag for a four-year-old. We, I looked around and said, well, our districts are either at eighty-five percent or ninety percent. And I feel like ninety percent was probably the more. Appropriate way to look at it. And then after that, we would bring all of that information back. And administrator, myself and a kindergarten teacher would review the information. And now we're not just looking at academic and cognitive testing. We're also looking at that kiddo's social and emotional needs as well. We really need that little, that four-year-old essentially. To be performing at or above your typical five-year-old, early six-year-olds in order to be successful in kindergarten, going in at that age. So that's where we came to this board policy.
Any questions to have the policy? Takes a load off of. Any other questions?
Than Narcan?
Yeah.
So.
Explain that a little bit better.
Yeah, I can do my best. I don't have a policy regarding me, but to sum it up, so we know that drug overdoses across the nation are at an all-time high. And Cascade is not immune from this happening on our campuses. And with the exorbitant amount of fentanyl coming into schools and kiddos taking things that they don't even realize that. They don't even know what it is, let alone that they could die from it. Our district nurse is very passionate about making sure that we save lives. And this policy allows our nursing team to administer Narcan to our, to our students who have overdosed from a drug. And it does advise time for the emergency crew to get here and it will essentially save a life.
I mean, in my head, I'm picturing like Pulp Fiction. Is it, is it a grin?
I have not been trained on Narcan, however, I will be one of the administrators also trained on it. So I can't answer that question on how it is administered. Or what exactly goes into it.
It's nasal.
Definitely. I know it's nasal. I don't believe it's a shot. And I haven't seen Pulp Fiction, so I didn't actually know.
So it's not like an epi pen that you slip into the leg?
Um, it could be.
It could be.
I'm pretty sure.
I think it's nasal. Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Informational items, no, they're not there yet. Out of state trip requests for the baseball spring break trip.
So you have in front of you the request for our baseball teams, Rastus is here as well, in case there's any questions that they want to be reviewed itinerary. Who's gonna be going? They've raised money for this program. They, they're got themselves ready. And families will be there along with, it looks like Miss LaDay will be there. I'm sure because a family member is going.
One or two.
One or two.
Oh, nice.
So we'll have all the right people on this great trip of theirs. Looks like it's over spring break at the most part. And they wanted to get your approval.
Appreciate that. Any questions about that?
No, sounds good.
All right, now we'll go to information, coach advisor list.
So every section, every one-third part of the year, right, we add to the coaches advisor list. This is the update for that. Anything in yellow that reminds you of who is taken care of, looks like mostly the basketball, all the winter sports. And we'll probably have one more to do with regard to spring sports when it's over. And I'm getting nodded heads over here in the corner. Would you would also, yes, that is correct.
Is this about the right, the normal time we get the winter sports when it's like the seasons are almost over?
Some of those are, actually, they have a second season at the junior high level. So their second season just started.
Okay.
So yeah, if you look at the first part, there's like, there are some that need to get wrapped up for the varsity at the high school.
Right.
But there's, most of them are eighth grade, seventh grade. So they do a basketball season before Christmas and a basketball season after Christmas.
Oh.
Boys and girls switch.
Okay. So I knew wrestling for junior high was different than high school, so I didn't realize that. Okay. Any questions about that? Public comment, looks like no public comment was submitted for this meeting. Hey. And we're going to move on. I'm sorry, I'm shuffling. Okay, moving on to resolutions.
Hang on, I got.
I know. Oh, really?
Yeah. Mine are nonexistent.
But wait a minute, it's not. It's just the title.
Yeah, it's just the.
It's just, it's just this part.
Oh, okay. Well, we got them all right here.
We've got them.
Want to pass them along?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Resolutions, okay, so A, a resolution regarding retirement of Chris Albert.
Okay, be resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to accept the retirement of Christopher Albert at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Second. Then moved and seconded to accept the retirement of Christopher Albert at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposing sign, motion carries. Eight B, resolution regarding resignation of Kareem Louis.
Be it resolved for the Cascade Board of Education moves to accept the resignation of Corinne Louis.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Kareem Louis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign, motion carries. Eight C, resolution regarding licensed employee renewal.
Be it resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the licensed employee renewal list as recommended by the administration.
Then moved and seconded to approve the licensed employee renewal list as recommended by the administration. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposing sign, motion carries. Eight D, resolution. Resolution regarding.
More policies.
Board policies for immediate action.
Be it resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve with immediate action. The recommended changes to the board policies as presented. J H C D dash J H C D A medications. J H C D dash J H C D A dash A R medications. J E B A, early entrance. J E B A dash A R, early entrance into kindergarten first grade.
The second motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the immediate action of the recommended changes to the board policies listed below. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposing sign, motion carries. Eight E, resolution regarding out of state trip request.
Be resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the request for high school baseball team to travel to Phoenix, Arizona over spring break from March twenty-sixth. To April twenty-first. First, pardon me, April first.
No, thank you.
No, that's too long.
Yeah.
So it moved and seconded to approve the request for the high school baseball team to travel to Phoenix, Arizona over spring break from March twenty-sixth to April first. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Opposing sign, motion carries. That's all the resolutions, future agenda items. Currently, we have a budget committee opening. If you know anybody that wants to be on the budget committee. We have, at the audit date, statement for economic interest. Oh, yeah.
So if everybody sent you that stuff, you need assistance with the statement of economic interest. These two are here, you might want to talk with them before you leave, instead of the time, make sure we can assist you with that process. Make sure that you at least follow through. I can't assist you with the writing, but I can assist you with making sure you get the process.
Okay.
Okay.
And then with regard to the budget for the opening, we need to, we have. One committee member, we have one more.
We have one more.
So if you have a recommendation, please get it to the board chair. And I think you guys also talked about the folks that applied to be on the school board last year. Right, to take a look at those as well.
Okay.
We have until May, but it would be nice to take care of it in March for at least.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, um, while we do whatever we need to do, we can adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, all of you for coming. Safe drive home, safe drive in the morning.